It being six thirty two, I'll call a meeting to order. And I'm looking for a motion to accept the minutes of June the twenty first.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Motion in a second. Any corrections, deletions? Hearing none. Eric for a roll call.
You can do this because there's no one remote.
Okay, show your hands. Who will?
To absten- absten- to abstentions.
Ten, that's all. Any A and Rs?
Wait a minute, June twenty first.
Right.
Okay, absent, yeah. You know, I saw it here, but I didn't see the absent word.
A and Rs?
No A and Rs.
No A and Rs. So, here's the story. You guys are scheduled for a site plan review. I've got a special permit at twelve minutes. One at seven o'clock and one at seven fifty. How we're supposed to do special permits in fifteen minutes? I don't know. But we could talk until six forty-five. If you want to do that. Because I've got to, I've got to open it on time.
Right. If, if we're gonna have to go again later, you might as well.
Yeah, could, I mean.
I just don't know how we're.
We're just gonna twiddle our thumbs here for, you know, twelve minutes. Till somebody else shows up.
You want to just do a basic overview of the?
Another word you could start.
The site, the front site plan?
I'm here six forty-five, so.
You're at six forty-five? I can't.
Can't, we can't take you early.
I can't take you early, and I can't take you late.
Just an over- overview.
Yeah.
To start.
So, good evening. My name is Richard Palmroyd, and my firm is acting as the project manager on behalf of Thomas Southridge. This evening, we're here to present to you the site plan information for our application. And we have with us Jennifer, I always say your name incorrectly.
Angie Ali.
Angie Ali.
Yeah.
From KVA. Brennan White from KVA. KVA is our project architect and working with us for a number of years through initial feasibility and now they're in design. And Chris Garcia from GGD Engineers, and Chris handles all of our site design, stormwater, and those types of things. So, we'd like to get started and give you an overview of the project, and I guess we'll get interrupted. But I'm just gonna sit down and let the professionals take over from here.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Just to get you oriented, if you all know where the site is. On the corner of Worcester and Snow Street, right here. It's about two point four-six acre site. It's been consolidated, all parcels, been consolidated. The, um, corner street has been abandoned and, and our taking place, the property has been filed with the registry at these, so. That is the site, you know, it's relatively flat here. As, as you know, it's all pretty much paved. General business is only here, or three there, to the south, to the west is our two. The site is relatively level here and climbs up to the back to the northwest corner. So, as you can imagine, really, the usable, developable site is generally down in that, in that zone across Worcester Street. So, majority of the frontage lands within the, the general business zone, so it's, our, our design is really utilize those regulations to make it a part of, part of the design to develop the, uh, the project. Um, Joe Phil Park, obviously, is leading us to the west. General grade change across the site, it's about fourteen feet up to the, to the northwest corner. The project is a fire station that's around twenty-six thousand square feet. The base bid. This is what you see right here is the base bid. There's also an alternate for a storage building is around three thousand square feet, which I'll, I'll show you in a moment. It's really the, uh, you know, the main goal is that, that if budget allows to have that as well, um, to support the, the fire department and, and their, their storage needs for unnecessary equipment. Which I understand some other pieces of equipment are stored around, around the town, so bringing them on the site would be ideal if the budget allows. So, this is the, the main building here. Main entrance is located right here. Our apparatus apron right on, on Worcester Street, uh, set, setback, um, for apparatus to be able to pull out. Uh, so the bays are right here, they are, uh, double sided and not necessarily a pull-through situation. If there's only two of them would allow, uh, or would be arranged to be able to pull through. Uh, we've got visitor parking to the south. And to the west is really employee and, and, you know, first responder parking. Uh, it's got an access point on the high side of the site off of Snow Street, uh, which comes in ungated, uh, down to the lower lot. There's also a connection to Martin Street in the back where there's a sliding gate. The whole site will be fenced. An ornamental, uh, aluminum ornamental fence, which, uh, you see common around, around the town. Four foot high along, uh, along Snow Street, six feet, uh, as well as plantings, uh, plantings for buffer along the west and south, south edge adjacent to, to the residential properties. Because of the gray change, there's, um, uh, there are some walls involved, uh, and, and to enable this, um, you know, the site and the circulation uh, for the apparatus, obviously, large turning movements throughout. So, there is a, a, a wall that begins fairly low here in the back corner. At this point, it's about six feet high. Uh, that wall would have everyone enough fence on top of it as well. That would be four feet high. The grade will gently slope down to the top of that wall, so really a, a one buffer strip here with, uh, street tree plantings, uh, as well as street tree plantings in the, in the front. And, and across the back adjacent to the park. The, uh, as I mentioned, the main entrance is right here. There's a stairway connection.
Oh, I'm sorry, can I squeeze through?
Yeah, sure.
I'm gonna have to squeeze through and over.
To get to the main entrance, uh, from the visitor lot, there's a, a ramp up to a, um, entrance plaza with a flagpole. And then a secondary ramp that comes up to the main entrance, as I mentioned, off the main sidewalk. There'll be a stairway up, uh, to get to the, the main entrance. The, as I mentioned, the street, uh, scape will be enhanced around the facility. You know, street tree plantings, new sidewalks and curbing. Uh, new landscaping throughout. Uh, project did receive a varies for front yard setback, uh, as well as a three yard setback, which would entail, uh, which would enable the alternate to occur. Uh, this is the auxiliary building right here, which would be accessed off of Martin, Martin Street. Uh, there is, there are two which, which would be accessed on both sides. Through, through the visitor lot. As well, so this is the ideal situation, uh, as well as the coverage, uh, was a variance. The uh, project does, currently, there's no stormwater attenuation throughout the site. It's primarily paved, uh, it's kind of fairly high. It's around sixty-two percent, uh, impervious coverage throughout. Uh, the project will be about, um, seventy or so. But it will also incorporate, uh, stormwater infiltration areas. Chris can talk a little bit about that. Do you want to do that now, uh, or, or later?
Later. Later, you're gonna need more than, you're gonna need more than four minutes.
So, yeah, there's multiple locations. There's one in the front and one in the back, which will allow, uh, you know, metered flow out as well as infiltration. Uh, so it kind of offsets the, the overall impervious on the site, so that, that variance was a thing as well. General heights, it's a one-story building. There's a stair tower in the corner. There is a training, uh, concrete pad in the corner for, uh, fire department training. Jennifer can talk a little bit about facade and everything. You know, we've got, uh, elevations, we've got images of mo- of the model of the, uh, the post designs, we can go over that. But, you know, in general, it will certainly enhance the, uh, you know, street space within this area and finish in the neighborhood.
Yes.
It's probably a little bit there.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Okay.
One question is, uh, you said, I could ask this one.
Yeah.
Consolidated, um, I noticed you had an, uh, approval not required survey plan. Did you say, uh, they, that's been recorded? We have it signed.
It's been recorded.
Because it's existing lines of ownership, is how it's reported?
There's no change in.
It was eighty-one X.
Yeah, an eighty-one, okay. I just want to make sure, because I know in here it had a, had a signature block that wants to submit it here, but I didn't think it needed it. Because there's no change, change. Okay.
Okay. You're six forty-five.
Can I make a motion that we, uh?
Yes.
Postpone the, uh, site plan.
Continue, continuation.
Site plan approval, um, meeting, uh, till, uh, later in this meeting. After, uh, special permit public hearing.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, so Mr. Six Forty-five. We're a seven-member board with six members, one of which is missing tonight. So, you, if we open this up, you'd need all five of us to say yes. So, you got a choice of waiting? And do we get six members on board or seven, then?
True, if I may, we're recording this evening, so we can, um, have our missing member review the recording.
We could.
And then she can participate under the Mullen's rule.
Right, which is good.
If the hearings are continued, so.
Right.
That is also another option, is to proceed and then.
Yeah, you'd, you'd have six.
You don't think, you know, you're gonna get by both, but you think.
You can continue it to the next meeting and the other person can vote. Is what.
Or they could do it this way.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. Okay, so I'll read this in. Yes. Well, it's six forty-four plus, so six forty-five.
Yeah, until after he finishes reading it.
In accordance with provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section eleven, Southridge Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, at six forty-five PM, G A R Hall, Lower Level Town Hall, forty-one Elm Street, Southridge, Mass. Purpose of the public hearing is considered a special permit application as filed Schaefer Enterprises, Inc., for earth excavation per Section nine dash two oh one of the Southridge Journal Bylaws located at eight thirty-three Rear Main Street, map thirty-three, Lot two C. Al West Junior owner. Application and plan are on file for review during normal business hours with the town clerk. This notice is also published electronically on www dot telegram dot com and on www dot mass dot mypublicnotices dot com. Any person who should wish, and if you heard the application, should appear at the time and place designated. David Payer, Chairman, Southridge Planning Board. So, we are open. Please come forward. Yeah.
You can sit in the hot seat.
Do I have to?
Yeah. We've got it electrified, so it helps.
Eric, do you have a plan? In the meantime, you want to describe your project?
Yes, we took over the property. It was in pretty rough shape, to say the least, and, uh, we cleaned it up, went out to the borders. That were kind of already established as far as like the cleared land and the burn. Set graves for proper, you know, actually being able to use it. It was pretty. It was, it was a mess, to say the least. Grated it off, got water to go left and right of the building, away from the building. And, um, put gravel down and made it usable. And cleaned it up. We took, uh, four and a half dumpsters of trash and, uh, five loads of steel. And there's still a load of steel there. And part of the pile that we're talking about today is, uh, just giant chunks of concrete from the old building, the old mill. Curbing from the old mill that was buried, uh, pipe that was buried, uh, just rubble.
So, any water issues?
As far as.
Drainage or?
Discover water issues?
No, I'm saying what exists, what existed compared to what exists now.
Oh, yeah, we've solved ninety percent of those water issues. The water was going around the burn, uh, on the so I don't know if you've been down there or not, but the, the pile of dirt, the water was going around the burn that was in place on that end.
Had it through the river?
It would, yeah, it had it through the river, yeah. And so now what it's doing is it's going down, following the burn. We dug a, a swell, uh, we, after conservation, there rested a seventy-foot swell, so we did a drainage swell. It is longer than seventy, yeah. We went further, um, because we had a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty feet of, um, of notice there for forty feet, so we went longer than, they wanted seventy, we went longer. And then we have multiple, uh, filtration and then a emergency spillway. And all this rain that we've gotten, um, everything's held up. We don't have any washes or.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
If I, if I may, just for full disclosure, the previous plan for this site, I did the engineering and permitting for L West years ago. Um, I'm very familiar with the site, but I have no interest in, uh, with the new owners or, and, or going forward. I just wanted for clarification that the plan up there is one that I actually prepared.
Okay.
So, if you look between the building here and this burn that exists, this small area here, water is running and flowing through that's been taken care of by the swell, it basically goes right up to the building and continues for almost ninety-five feet. Along this no disturbance area. And there are check dams through there and an emergency spillway was put in also. This here, um, is a catch basin drywall that's been installed, that was installed years ago. I think if you could speak to the amount of material that was removed or, or estimates of that, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think it's, it's somewhere around fifteen hundred yards, somewhere right around there that we piled up. And it's not removed, it's, it's on site still, but it's piled up, and that was a mixture of rock, brick, loom. I mean, just decades of piling of debris. Also huge, there's some concrete chunks, half the size of this room. So, um, the old billards that the building was sitting on, so it's a, it's a mess, there's a lot of stuff. And we have that all the way, it's not on the drawing, but kind of where you can see that existing building sign on the left-hand corner. It's, yeah, it's down that left-hand corner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
David, if I may.
Yep.
Actually, the site plan was done, L West, he never, he, he only did probably the basin, I think he went, his only thing he really put in out of the original site plan. The vegetation, if you see the pine trees, ooh, you lost them there.
No, I'm, I'm gonna go back to it.
Yeah, the pine trees along that burn, it, over the years, that's all vegetated itself, so they didn't have to, I mean, there was no reason, there's no you're not gonna tear down, put, take down trees and put up new trees. Over the years, the site, what they've done out there, um, originally, they, um, I went out there, looked.
And this is Eric's vacation.
Eric's vacation.
Very entertaining.
They, sure, this is the area, this is the rip rip area that was, uh, had a, uh, flow directly into the brook, and they've, they've, they've solved the situation, made the drainage, uh, better along the erosion along that area. They, um, the area itself, uh, the rest of the site was graded off. Pretty much, uh, they put the, as you can see, the wood chips, uh, they did the overflow, so in case it did flood, the water still has a, uh, a channel for, for an output.
This was the original grade.
Yeah.
Uh, which is hard to see.
Up on the pole, yeah.
And this is the new grade there, so it's, it's.
So, they, what they did is they, they pitched that, there's a, everything from the bank was pitching into the, the old mill building and so forth. They regraded the area. They've added the swell like was, originally, this wasn't out here before conservation. They've added the swell along the tow of slope like was originally designed. They've added the, uh, check dams, uh, uh, along that, uh, uh, slope. It's all, all gravel in that area. The permeability is, uh, uh, real good for drainage, uh, infiltration along that. The only thing that I see on there, that they did add a, uh, chain link fence around the perimeter, uh, around the property. And the problem is, the only issue I see on this, what you've done is a lot better. Conservation Commission, uh, handled this and went through an extensive meeting for order conditions and so forth, uh, for this. Uh, but you got the fence around the site, but the problem is the fence is on, right now, that site is in two different ownerships. It's in, uh, uh, the ownerships of, uh, L West, but another entity of L West. The thing is, is, uh, to make this legal, you really, we really need the, because now we've got structures and parking and everything on two different entity ownerships. Um, gonna need a, uh, A and R plan, uh, uh, or a, uh, eighty-one X plan reverting this all to a, uh,
Single owner.
Single owner. To refer a contiguous lot, because otherwise you've got each lot as a separate, separate setback, do you want to create that to a contiguous lot?
This, this fence line here, uh, along the, the this fence line through here is essentially on the property line, but it butts out at one point in time onto the additional.
It's the one in front by the foundation, the one that's over onto the other. The one as you drive in, that one is over on the other entity, because the property, the original property line is only like four, thirteen to fifteen feet off the building and foundation, that fence line is like thirty feet off. So, that, that would.
It also does button the back.
Yeah, that would, that would be the issue, is that you gotta do the combination to make this legal as, uh, for, uh, one for contiguous building lot, contiguous, contiguous ownership.
But you're planning on purchasing.
Are you, are you planning on doing any, uh, paving?
No.
No, no paving in here?
Right now, no.
Because.
I mean, where, you can see it's hardly tore up now, but what ends up happening as you come around with those big trucks, I mean, it's just, it's just a matter of time, we're just gonna destroy pavement. So, we may do, at some point, we may do millings.
That, if you do that, you're gonna probably have to go back to conservation and probably, uh, would have, have to come back for ours, because you're gonna change your, your impervious surface area for your drainage and your drainage, so you have to come back before the board.
So, as of right now, um, the drainage structure, I've been out there several times, I've not been out there since this weekend.
I, I went by and checked it out. I drove down during the rainstorm.
Okay.
There's no water accumulating on the site.
There is, it, nothing really sheet flowed into that basin.
No. It's actually losing itself.
Minimal finds that are actually in there. Everything else is, I mean, this material that was put down is pretty much, it's rock solid, but it is allowing a lot of infiltration, so it is, uh,
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know where Jimmy got that material, but I want some.
They're secret hole.
I know where it is. I know where he got it.
So, that, this area is where all the trash and we could see from the road.
And then some, yeah. So, you can't see, see where those vehicles are parked?
Yes.
You can't see much past, where we are is the river, and you can't see back here from the road. And that's where all the trash was.
Yeah, you were looking up in the front, Sandy, I think, if you look at the back, the back of the old brick building, not, not the, the back of the metal building right here. There was a bunch of stuff in the corner, right where that, uh, station wagon was, there was a bunch of all old stuff we can see from a one thirty-one.
Yeah.
In that area. But, um, in the, in the front, he has some stuff and they've cleaned that up too.
Yeah.
So, so the whole site's been cleaned up.
This big pile that you have in the back is on the other side of the fence?
Yes, um, one of the fixtures, you can see the base of it.
Right there, yeah, right, okay.
But you can see, we have separated, so you can see the left-hand side is all the concrete that we pulled out of there.
You're gonna remove that or it's gonna stay?
That's why I'm here.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Because I was told, don't touch it.
Don't touch it. You can't move.
So, I came here, yeah.
So, I understand the issue.
That's gonna be the question. Conservation addressed the erosion control around that pile. So, that's more your jurisdiction, it's more so the monofill and the traffic that is gonna take the trucks to go in and out of there, which is an industrial zone. I, I don't really see a, I guess you would.
No, I I, I think.
No.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
No, it looks so neat.
We can finish one. I'll make a motion to approve the special permit hearing filed for Scheffler Enterprises for excavation, earth excavation.
Oh, car close.
Got to close, okay.
That motion, close?
Close, sure.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Okay, now I can do it. Uh, make a motion to approve the special permit application filed by Scheffler Enterprises for earth excavation per Section nine point two oh one of the Southridge general bylaws located at eight thirty-three Rear Main Street, map thirty-three, Lot two C. Uh, owner, is it still owner L West or?
Yeah.
Owner, uh, L West Junior. Uh, with the conditions that the, um, conservation, uh, commission's order conditions be attached to this, uh, special permit application.
Lots gotta be combined.
Yeah, and the lots, uh, have, uh, have to be, uh, combined to one common ownership, uh, in order to meet setbacks, uh, uh, for your, uh, uh, site.
If I may for clarification, combined once he purchases them?
Yeah, um, well, it's gotta be combined. That's a, that's a, put the cart before the horse type of thing. Are you purchasing right away or?
No.
Then, then they, they gotta be combined now. L West is gonna have to combine them into one lot.
Do you want them all combined? It's just, there's actually.
There's four. There's four now. You bought the last one, there's the last one too, or?
There's all four of them.
All four of them, okay. Yeah, there was four originally, the back one and then the three, the little one up front.
There's a really, really small.
Small one, it's just.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I, I, I'd wanna see that, because you gotta, if you, if you're working the site, you gotta have the site in, in.
You gotta own it, yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, that would, that would be it, that, uh, any, any modifications of the impervious area or additions to the site, you'd, just so you know, you have to come back before the planning board.
Great.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second discussion?
I think this is fairly straightforward.
And just add the special permit conditions, the character, fits in the character of the zone that it's in and so forth. Eric, are typical?
Yes.
I think it fits.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It fits all the requirements for.
For the special permit.
And it looks better.
Okay.
So, usual findings. So, usual findings.
Yeah, yes.
It is, it is in, uh, any, any additional findings?
No.
I think it's the standard.
Standard is, yeah.
Make sure that we, you know, whatever.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Anybody, anybody in the audience? Nope, all right. All those in favor?
How long do I have to get rid of the dirt?
Till tomorrow, anyway.
Well, it's actually a special permit, as long as you're working on it, you, you've got up there here.
Well, you have to start within two years.
Yeah.
That guy back there, he knows.
There is a, once I write up the approval letter, get Dave to sign it, it's gonna be next week. If it's filed with the town clerk, then the town clerk will issue that to you after twenty days if there's no appeal.
You, you can work it within twenty days at your own risk.
Okay.
So, if you take the soil out, you might have to bring it back, which I don't detect.
Okay, guys.
Oh, please, the building inspector has a question.
Yeah, I do the seven oh one, yes.
Well, the dirt, are you bringing brought to somewhere in our town? Do you guys need it? I'm not looking for it. Oh, wow.
Where are you gonna put it?
Yeah, I, I don't have a spot, to be honest. I don't know where I'm going with it yet.
Has it been tested for any contamination?
Uh, that I don't know. I, I haven't done anything, no.
Well, I have to.
That might be with the fires. Consider, you guys gotta have that discussion, considering there was a fire and everything there, some of that, you might wanna check that. Good luck, Mike.
Okay, I got, uh, I got seven o'clock, guys. Thank you.
You got it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Is the applicant for two fifteen, Hamilton Street here? Okay. Come forward. You you need five positive votes. There's five of us here. There's one other member who can listen to this and vote if needed. You need five positive at the next meeting. You need five positive votes to get. If needed, you need five positive, at the next meeting, you need five positive votes to get. Special permit, you can either say yes or no.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna read yours. It being seven oh two. In accordance with the vision of Mass General Law, chapter forty-eight, section eleven, the Southwood Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday. July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M, the G R Hall, lower level Town Hall, forty-one Elm Street, Southwood, Mass. Purpose of the public hearing is to consider the special permit application as filed by Marillo Silva. For the reinstatement of a non-conforming structure per section six point five C, the Southwood zoning bylaw located at two fifteen Hamilton Street, map thirty-five, lot ninety-two. Marillo Silva owner, application and planner on file for review during normal business hours with the town clerk. This notice is also published electronically on W W W dot telegram dot com and on W W W dot. M A dot mypublicnotices dot com, any person interested wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. David Pear, Chairman of Southwood Planning Board. So, state your case.
Um, I bought this two family house, uh, located at two fifteen Hamilton Street. And, uh, the house has a lot of violations at the building department. And a lot of findings that the former owners didn't, uh, uh, address the, the issues there. Because the house, the first owner let the house move for closure, then the bank assumed the house, and then long time passed by. And nobody took an action to renovate the house. So my idea is just, is just a draft, so we're gonna keep the same for plan, the same, uh, footprint of the house. But the idea is to renovate the house, we, my structural engineer was there and he said this, the house is structurally fat, uh, uh, sound. And, uh, but he said, once I open all the walls, go to the property, he wants to make another assessment, to make sure that everything is safe and sound. And of course, the building commissioner, we're gonna inspect and do everything, he already asked me to, to do a code review. So the house, we have to bring all the house to the pole. New electrical, new plumbing, new H P X system, and the roof, the windows, new everything. And that's the plan, so this is the existing condition there, the for plan and the intervention.
There's a picture of the house, there's a, there's a. Oh, okay, okay, good.
Yeah, and then this is the, we're gonna be the modification, gonna be two units with, uh, three bedrooms each.
There's two, each of the, each floors, yeah, okay.
Up and down.
Yeah.
This is the dilapidated building just across from the, uh, Flatiron Building?
No, it's down the road somewhat.
I'm lost in this.
No.
Yeah, I, I.
Well, it is, it's, it's, it's in there, yeah, at the edge of the, far edge of the Flatiron.
Yeah, the neighbor house was totally renovated, looks beautiful, but that one, not so.
Oh, the one that's the Dr. Griggs?
No, 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 okay.
Wasn't that the one with all the pretty gingerbread stuff that we looked at?
No.
That wasn't that one?
Yeah.
That's the one I thought it was, right there.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay.
That's, that's the one I was hoping you would do, um, I'll let you continue and then I'll make the comment.
No, I, I think I, I'm done, it's just, uh, that's it, it's not, uh, like, uh, I'm a, I'm a construction supervisor. And, uh, I also a real estate broker, and my plan is keep the house as a rental property.
The porch is staying, are the porch is staying, or what are you doing on the outside that might?
My, my son is an engineer and he loves the property, he said that, you know, you must bring that to the, because it looks beautiful, I said, yeah, but it's not like, I, I prefer the modern style. But, uh, I don't know, I, I, my plan is like, uh. At least make, make the porch smaller maybe, or keep the porch as it is, I, I have to check underneath to see what, what it has there, you know? Most certainly, you never know, because when you start, you know, you open everything and then.
What are you doing with the garage in back?
With what?
The garage.
The garage, it must be tear down, but it's a very old structure and, and I have to open space for the, you know, for at least one.
They do a site plan, showing a site plan on this for parking and so forth? A site plan for parking?
No, but yeah, but back there, it's, it's, it's for.
I think there's a lot of stuff that we need to know, and, oh no, go ahead, Eric, I'm sorry.
So there's a four car garage currently, up utilizes that for a lot more parking spaces, uh, just in that area.
I was gonna say that one of the findings we're supposed to make is that it fits in with the rest of the neighborhood. Even though it's in terrible condition, it does fit in now. And we've all felt that it was a beautiful building, just like your son. I think you should be presenting a drawing of what it's going to be like, because I was hoping it would look pretty much like this with the. And you mentioned you like a more modern look, I don't like a more modern look with a building that had the original beautiful lines like this. I'd wanna see a plan with landscaping plan and how you're going to cover the building.
The actual facade of the building, uh, uh, plans of, how, how are you gonna treat the facade, are you gonna keep the gingerbread, the sized windows? Uh, and so forth, uh, that's one thing that, uh, we wanna see on the, on the plans.
Okay.
And a cycle, cycle, I'd like to see.
Yeah, but it's not the problem to keep like that, because the problem is they, they all their house, they look more modern with, you know, uh, but.
I'd like to see, um, a site plan showing, uh, parking dumps, uh, you're gonna need, uh, trash location, barrel, uh, location, how many, how many family is this gonna be?
Two, two families.
Two families, so it's only gonna be the roll, well, depends on what the town does, probably still roll offs, I guess. Toters, locations, uh, access locations in the back, pedestrian access and so forth.
I have a question for Mike, what's the status of that driveway or whatever it is in the back of all those houses?
Well, that's deep right away to the back of that.
For, what, four or five houses?
So that's.
Yeah.
Correct.
So they could still use the parking spaces.
Oh, yeah.
Once the garage is gone.
You said about the site plane, the facade?
The site, site plan and facade, the facade, how, uh, we wanna, are you gonna keep the same colors, the same type of, uh. Uh, woodworking, gingerbread, the porch's location and so forth.
Are you gonna keep the tree and just, uh, shape it, maybe raise the canopy?
Yeah.
You know, I love the stone wall, is that solid enough to keep, those are the questions.
Window, window sizes, so, don't, we don't wanna, because of the character, you.
It's got great character.
You're gonna change, if changing the window size, change.
Right.
Change.
Your son is right.
So let's do it, no problem.
Okay, so I think, um, that information, what you presented here, we, um. We looked at, and I think we still have five minutes to talk about this, but I think I'm gonna recommend that we continue this public hearing till the next meeting. At a time certain, uh, so, so we can get the information from this gentleman and, uh, we can evaluate, uh. Uh, the site plan as a whole.
So looking into.
August second.
Either August second or sixteenth would be a typical.
Right, August second, I'm gone the sixteenth. Or, or the following week, if you wanted to go, or if you wanted to go three weeks, if you wanted to go to. The second week of.
Twenty-third.
The ninth.
Ninth, yeah.
It's, I mean, this is an unusual time of year, so we can, as far as I'm concerned, if everybody come the ninth, I'd be okay.
So, uh, just a question, this is special permit, it replaces the, the permits on the, on the building department?
No, no. You need this in order to get the building permits from the building.
I thought it is just to keep the house, and I'm like, I thought, alright.
Now, you, 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 this is a, a special permit is to make sure that what you're doing stays in character of the neighborhood, it doesn't detriment the neighbors. And so forth, uh, because, because it's a, um, the abandoned, it's abandoned years. Yes, more than two years, so what we, the planning board has the, uh, uh, jurisdiction to tell you what you, uh, to. Recommendations and what they wanna see to keep the character of the neighborhood.
Okay.
So if you can, uh, get that information to us, uh, and then we have it on record, and then the building inspector can take what we have approved on record and make sure that your plans. Meet what we have approved.
Alright.
Let's do it August the ninth.
I'm good on the ninth, dude.
Your motion to.
Continue, need a motion to continue?
Well, I'll make a motion to continue to August ninth at six forty-five.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Uh, motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
I do, I do it for my wife.
Yeah, can I keep, can I keep one?
Yeah, this is just a.
I like to keep it so that I'd be ready for next.
I guess I'll just one.
Yeah.
I don't need it, no.
Okay, thank you. See you on the ninth.
Alright.
And if there's any problem, just let Eric know and we'll see you on this.
Thank you.
Loop some in.
Hey, Jimmy, you're done.
Yeah, you did.
There you go, six forty-five alive.
You're a little late, Jimmy.
Needs a little more sleep.
Um, well, now we gotta make room for the conservation question.
Oh, yes. You find some chairs, there's only two.
Oh, Eric, right here.
I'm gonna get cozy.
Yeah. Oh, moving in. Yeah, sit down, sit down.
Wouldn't be the first time.
Many thanks.
There you go.
So this is a joint meeting? And so, what I would do is just, uh, make sure that they have their court.
Yeah.
I know, but today, is it in? You've, you've already opened the meeting?
We, we did, yes.
Okay, alright, so you're, you've got your forum.
Okay. One minute. Hey, Mike?
I mean.
You're, that, you're okay with it, uh, I mean, it's gonna be, who's doing the?
It's gonna depend on the structural.
Who's doing the chapter, chapters?
Chapter thirty-four?
Yeah, who's doing it?
Yes, who's handed me with anything yet?
Alright, that's, that's gonna be the main thing.
I have, I'll, um, bring you the folder with all the orders on it, though, if you wanna see.
Oh, I'm sure it's that.
Okay.
Well, I, I would do too.
McDonald's?
Yes.
Okay, so, we're gonna have a joint meeting between conservation and the planning board. And I'll read the opening statement here. In accordance with provisions of Mass General Law, chapter forty-eight, section eleven, the Southwood Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday. July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven fifteen, in the G R Hall, lower level Town Hall, forty-one Elm Street, Southwood, Mass. Purpose of the public hearing is to consider a special permit application as filed by McDonald's USA LLC. For proposed drive-through per section four point four point B and construction within the floodplain overlay district per section nine point one point five. Comma, A, of the Southwood zoning bylaw located at five oh five East Main Street, map forty-four, lot sixteen C, Southwood. McShell LLC owner, the application and planner on file for review during normal business hours with the town clerk, this notice is also published electronically. On W W W dot telegram dot com and on W W W dot M A dot mypublicnotices dot com, any person interested wishing to be heard. On the application should appear at the time and place designated, David Pear, Chairman of Southwood Planning Board.
And this will also work as a joint, uh, filing for a notice of intent, um, for all of the same place, same, same, uh, uh, people. And, and so we will be, um, hearing to, uh, determine whether an order can just be in order.
Okay.
Alright, I'm Bill Squires from Miss Levin in Boston, I'm outside counsel to McDonald's USA, with me is Eric DeBrul, a civil engineer from McDonald's from Boulder Engineering. As you just heard, McDonald's is seeking special permit to, um, modify the existing use, like you call drive-through food service. Um, which it has been doing for forty-nine years and to do construction in the floodplain overlay district. So, I think, uh, I guess procedurally, I should mention that we, um, the project in the J V district and the F P O D. And, uh, we had a number of potential non-conformities, as you know, and we got a variance from the zoning board in May. Or they voted in May and issued it in June, and they varied the front, you know, side of your setbacks, the minimum landscape buffer and maximum lot coverage. So, and I hand it off to Eric, if he can do the project with you, and then I can cover the, yes.
Yeah, for the record, Eric, DeBrul of Boulder Engineering.
What's your last name on the site?
DeBrul, D U B, R U L E. I'm sure everyone's familiar with the existing site, it's McDonald's within the, the larger plaza, uh. Almost a four thousand square foot building, counterclockwise circulation around typical of, of the, uh, the Quixote restaurant, uh. There is an existing drive-through, single order point on that building, you have two drive-through windows, a pickup window on that building. And what we're looking to do is really complete, completely raise the site, brand new building, your landscaping, improve the business operations for McDonald's, we've been, been there for a very long time. Just trying to improve, improve the site, uh, relative to the jurisdiction on resource areas, uh, for the conservation commission, uh, the river does surround the larger. Closet is outside the, uh, McDonald's property and the limit of work is outside the two hundred foot riverfront area. They're not jurisdictional, uh, to the river, but we are within the flood zone, so we have an flood zone A E with a map elevation of four hundred. This entire site, McDonald's site is under that floodplain, that's why we're before you, uh, to commission as well as a special permit for the floodplain, planning board. Rendered site plans, we're just zooming into, to the site plan here, um, again, McDonald's property is, uh, fairly small. As, you know, in relation to the rest of the, the development, uh, but again, it looks very familiar, we're, have a very similar. Site circulation, the building orientation, very similar to what's out there today, it's just very dictated by, by the size of the lot. But actually works fairly well for McDonald's. Couple of the operational improvements we're gonna make to the properties on the drive-through, uh, today you have that single order point. And the ordering system for McDonald's, when you have that single order point, really becomes a cog, if you will, in their whole drive-through system. Can't get the orders in quick enough, they can't make the food, and then you start to see queues staffing back behind order points. So we're actually introducing what McDonald's been doing for the past decade, um, what's called side-by-side drive-through, and essentially what you do is you have two order points. One here and one here, and that way if someone's taking a long order, just needs extra time with the menu, or they're not, you know. Ordering quick enough, the next customer in would recognize there's a car or two there, they could use the other ordering point, uh, so just makes it much more efficient. And reduces the staffing behind order points and puts it where you want it, which is, um, at the drive-through window, so operationally huge improvement for this site. Again, building will be completely refreshed, new landscaping, we're increasing landscaping on the property by, I think about one hundred and fifteen square feet additional green space. In terms of the utilities, all, all brand new utilities, the site's served well under the existing utilities, so no capacity issues or anything like that, so, but we'll be bringing utilities into the site. Existing stormwater, today the sheet flows to a couple of existing catch basins and heads off to the north, uh, and into the river, I presume. We're gonna place on site, within our property, the drainage system, so deep some footage catch basins. Which then outlets to a stormwater quality unit before then going into the rest of the plaza, so we'll be improving treatment for stormwater. And then relative to the floodplain, which is a big one, again, the whole site is completely under the floodplain, so. Portions of the building are, are in floodplain under existing conditions, um, so this won't be any difference, it's gonna be on a floodplain, the building. But, you know, the architect will need to design the building accordingly, um, what we're concerned with on the site plan is making sure we're providing, uh, compensatory storage within the floodplain. What we're concerned with on the site plan is making sure we're providing compensatory storage within the floodplain. So we're actually increasing the compensatory storage, foot by foot, each elevation, by a total of one hundred and forty-three cubic yards. So after the project is done, we'll actually be providing more plus storage on site. And that's by a way of depressing some areas within this landscape, uh, and more and a little bit of pavement area within the property. Bill covered a lot of the, the variances that we received for, for the building setbacks and the landscape buffers. And we're just kind of pinched for, for what we have for space, um, in that regard.
The side of the building?
In the exterior of the building?
Yes.
Before you take that one down, uh, at the bottom right-hand corner where your green goes up, is that going to be raised from, from the parking lot? Yes.
Yep, that'll be on a curve to match.
Because cars presently cut through and then go to the, they don't go through the normal way. And I wanna make sure they can't, I mean, it's gonna be kind of awkward for them to do it the way it is now, I can see it, which is.
Plus, you're gonna be going against traffic.
Right.
You're saying they cut through and this.
Yeah, well, like, the order point is, like, almost in the middle of the building, so they easily come in and they, they do a quick turn in there.
To get onto the drive-through, they come in off this edge, and the, the, the order point is probably another.
Further up.
Forty feet to the north, so they are able to make a quick turn.
And get in line.
They're not gonna be able to get in line on this one.
Right.
They have to circulate around, and I think for their, you know, typical customer who frequents a store, they're going to use the other driveway.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was raised or something, so it would prohibit the car from trying to cross it, you know?
They would not be able to enter directly if they came this way to get.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that a new transformer up front there? Or is existing, I, it's gotta be new, it's, I mean.
Yeah, it's gonna, we're, we're gonna have to replace the transformer, I don't know where it exists today, but it would be a new transformer.
Okay, you can continue.
So the exterior elevations of the building.
What's it gonna look like? What's it gonna look like?
Probably just looks exactly like Oxford.
Okay, I'm gonna give you a preview, it's gonna look a lot better than what it's.
It'll look like Oxford. The, the, the road layout is exact to almost Oxford mass. It's, the, the drive-through, the road layout, parking is very, almost identical.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so you're such the, the face that's facing east street is, is right here, you know, clapboard. Clapboard siding, you know, the window, fair amount of window glazing, some eaters on top, and then eating fans of, of wood. Patterns, I guess they call them, uh, neutral tones, it's not gonna be any bright reds or yellows or any, any of that colors that's from the old, old days. It's a very neutral. Yeah, yep, so.
Brick, brick on the bottom?
Brick is called out on the bottom, so you are one. Yeah, hundred face brick, so it'll be a, the brick system, it'll look, look and feel like brick, but I don't think it's the whole, whole course of brick.
Maybe it's not a stick, it's more of a facade thing.
Yep, yep, yeah.
And the only other issue we seem to have with businesses in town that we've gone through with is maintaining the landscape. They seem to forget that there's a lawnmower or a shrub trimmer or.
A trap.
It goes downhill pretty quick and I don't, it's like, isn't there a, a maintenance schedule that is maintained by, is it store to store, is it region by region, however it works, it always seems to be an issue.
It would be by the local operator, so it wouldn't be McDonald's corporate. So I can't talk to what, what they do, but I can certainly pass on the request or the, the comment to make sure, make sure that.
I mean, it, it's part of the look, I mean, when the, when the grass gets knee-high, it just looks like it's been a neglected site and, you know, is, is the food neglected too, you know?
Yeah, and I certainly think McDonald's Corporation will be encouraged, will, will be incented to encourage the operator. I think they're spending about three million dollars on this project, so they're gonna wanna put it nice.
Can I just keep a high level on the site plan and architecture, I don't know if you need to wrap up any special permits, certainly, if you have any questions, uh, on the site plan.
Yes.
Okay, I just, um, I wanted to, um, say that it's great that you're adding fifteen hundred, uh, feet of green space. We need, uh, impervious surface in that parking lot, but it's a huge, just pavement. So thank you for doing that and improving stormwater and getting the deep-sunk catch base up, that's sweet.
Stormwater is a big improvement.
Yeah, thank you for doing that, so I applaud that.
The other thing I'd say is that, um, this project satisfies the findings in Section four point five, view of the sun's bylaws, that's all spelled out in the narrative to the application. But if you'd like, I can go through it now as well.
I think that would be good because you want to make sure that it fits in with the surroundings, and that's one of the findings. I would like to say, Bill, that I think increasing the landscaping is a wonderful thing. My only concern is that buildings that are from established companies like this tend to have very little personality, and I can't tell from this drawing if it does have any, um,
character or personality.
Right, we did have, um, another project that is not keeping up with their cleanliness, but I'm sure that McDonald's will, because they always have. They've always picked up their trash. But they actually put in fake windows on the facade of, facade that faced the street, so that it would look more like, now, I don't know if that's possible, or if you would be willing to do that, but it would make a big difference. And I'm wondering where your signage, is there gonna be signage on the building?
So this elevation shows, and it's pretty, um,
It's light.
It's, yeah, it's pretty light, so you got a fourteen-square-foot open arch, you know, very, very solid.
On top of the.
Above the door.
Okay, so that's on the clapboard part?
Uh, no, there's no clapboard, that's ephes right there, it's a flat face, smooth face.
And then, yeah, that's all it's proposed, I think we're only allowed the one, that's what we're showing. It's gonna look very similar, sort of, to this, with the exception of this is brick and a, uh, clapboard siding.
Why aren't you putting brick? Well, I know the rest of the buildings in that are not brick, but.
Uh, sometimes McDonald's wants to change their, their typical proto-architecture, and this is what, what their new, you know, their new branding is.
So, so now you're using a flat room?
Yep, that is correct.
Physical footprint of the two buildings existing and?
So I think, I think the existing is about thirty-six hundred square feet, and then there's another three or four hundred square feet of an exterior cooler system.
And the new one is just about four thousand square feet, and then we're encasing the cooler system, so you can't see, see it from the outside.
Okay.
So the, uh, the building itself is gonna be a little bigger, because the landscape area where the children's playground is, is now gonna be part of the McDonald's building?
Pretty much.
The total square foot area of the two buildings are very similar, I think, um, I'm not sure exactly where the delta is coming up, I'm just trying to add more, just more.
Yeah.
So what the, what is the place space now? I mean, what's the place space going to be?
That's a driver, that's a driver, driver that comes across here.
Will there be any outside seating?
Is there gonna be a dumpster, or how does that work?
Dumpster's at the rear of the building.
Right there, David. It's in that little section, right there.
Right in there, yeah, okay.
It's inside the closed area on the back side.
Lighting?
Lighting, um.
Hold down cast?
Hold down cast, starts going flying, starting to lighten planes. Typical, uh, what you see out in that plaza today, on a huge lots, it's a ton of lights. So we have, um, several new bulbs on the frontage. And then you have existing lights already in the plaza on this side, keeping, keeping outside of that.
What kind of bulbs would they be?
I'm looking for the detail.
Exact material?
Yeah, he actually, he's looking for them.
They're just be, just, you know, steel circular pole, um, total fifty, fifteen feet tall.
And the fixtures, modern and?
Yeah, it's gonna be an L E D style, just.
You don't have a detail of it?
It's, yeah. Yeah, I mean, this is a, I have standard detail, but I mean, it's a fairly small head that just faces straight down.
Okay, right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a square box head, dude.
One.
L E D?
One, yes, but, yeah. Okay.
Um, one thing, so, so the, the boards are where, hold on. Um, the setback green spacing in the front is, with a new configuration, it's less than, is out there now, just so you're all aware of that. The green space in the front along between, um, Main Street and the parking is, uh, is, um, less than, um, is previously out there. Not by much, but it is, it is less, but they're also adding, they're adding the corners, so I think it's a, it's a compromise that gives a little on the front, and they're adding the better traffic flow.
Now, am I missing the landscaping plan that's going in those spaces? Right, but I don't see, okay.
They're in here, here's, here's the planting things.
Okay, what? Okay.
Like I said, planting things always look good starting off with.
So there were no trees, it doesn't look like.
Yes, there's.
What's the L S S?
Those are trees, those are sweet down.
Oh, okay.
Sweet down along the street.
I like those, okay. Yeah, no, those would be nice.
Yeah, in the area, the, uh, proposed, uh, the basin area, you're just gonna keep that as a, uh, grass basin?
Yeah, it's proposed a basin seat mix, it, that's just gonna, there'll be a little bit of water getting to it, but it won't pull water, but just need it to be landscaped, so it'll get wet times ten.
Cory, oh, I just wanted to ask, why aren't you gonna have any seating outside? I believe there's a couple tables outside now, I still go to McDonald's, where you're already, I'm sorry, I'm a bit stirring. But, um, it, it would be nice to have some outdoor seating, um, the rail trail is being proposed for across the street, and uh, they might be like, hey, let's do the rail trail after we eat, or whatever.
Yeah, so I think it's just a business decision for McDonald's, the lot is very small, so it doesn't readily accommodate a patio. Typically, if they have a patio, they want it off the front of their dining room, which would be here.
Right.
So it would be, McDonald's will have room for it. But we also, we'll point out, they're adding a pedestrian connection from, from the road into the site. So folks aren't walking or riding, they could get to the front of the building.
Yes.
So we do not have design guidelines, we are hoping to. In the absence of design guidelines, would you consider putting something on the facade of the building to make it look, look a little less like a box? Like a fake windows, for instance, or anything like that? I mean, we can't make you, because we don't have design guidelines right now. But, you know, it is pretty.
Pull it up a little bit.
No.
Doesn't have any character.
So McDonald's brand, very, very, very important to them, um, very hard to get them to move from their standards, because it's a business for them, most of their traffic to the site is by that, that side trip, so they need to be recognizable in, in a brand.
But a fourteen-square-foot sign would certainly make it quite visible.
And, and I know McDonald's will do variations, they do do it, because.
They can, one is very strict guidelines to follow, they have to. But, you know, you know, fake windows, there are real windows for at least half of the building.
Well, I think, I think, I think the big clapboard area along the back there, right where you've got your, uh, side-mount lights, your, uh, down lighting, in the middle there, that's a large span of just plain clapboard. And I think that's what Sandy's looking at, something to break that up a, a little bit.
I've seen McDonald's with flowers and.
Well, I've seen McDonald's in London, right in front of the Parliament Building, it was no question it was McDonald's, but it fit right in. I mean, we can't make you do that, because we don't have guidelines, but I hope that we will have at some point in the near future. I'm just asking, would you consider doing something, because this is going to be in our town for a long time? And we don't wanna take away from your brand identification, we just wanted to look a little less utilitarian.
I, I think we can certainly discuss it, neither of us have the authority to commit to doing that, but, you know, I think it's a discussion.
Something to break that, that wall section up.
Yeah, I think, uh, also, uh, that transformer in the front there, there's gonna have to be some type of, uh, landscaping to soften that transformer, sitting right in the middle of the island.
Any other questions from anybody in the audience, or from your conservation?
Conservation, I mean, uh, generally speaking, we're in the center of a parking lot in the floodplain, but not within two hundred feet of the riverfront. And hearing a general improvement in storage, water management, I don't particularly have any, I don't foresee any complications, as long as they're not using an atomic bomb to clear the site. I think this can be done with minimal, if not no impact to the existing water that's around it.
What timeframe are you looking at? Between demolition and, you know, opening?
Yeah, so McDonald's is anxious to get moving forward, uh, April first groundbreak is, is what they're tracking. So if we can get through entitlements and get the building permit submitted in the next couple of months, that allows us to start ordering materials and getting stuff lined up for that. But so, yeah, construction timeline, timeline, typically six to seven months.
That's.
Mm-hmm.
No, I think it's a, it's an improvement to the, uh, to the, uh, the old building that's on the site, and, uh, you've addressed the, uh, flood, um, area where you're, actually, you're a little bit less on your, and you're adding compensatory storage, so that's, that's a plus.
Do you have something to say, Joe?
Thank you. Few questions, I just came late. Are you guys taking the playground away, or are you keeping it?
Eliminating it, we're not, we're not keeping it.
Are you gonna open going for hour? Cause that, you know.
We haven't, yeah, well, that was one of the next questions I was gonna ask.
Uh, I, that's why I didn't know what was.
Those are the hours.
It used to be twenty-four hour, didn't change, and this is kinda like, that's the only fast food we have in town, and the people was so glad we have you guys, and I just wanna say thank you for staying and improving the building, we're glad to have you here. I hope you guys consider open twenty-four hours, uh, it's really important, because you're the only guys fast food right now in the town. So if we can do twenty-four hour, that'd be awesome. I hope you guys consider open twenty-four hours, uh, it's really important, because you're the only guys fast food right now in the town, so if we can do twenty-four hour, that'd be awesome.
Um, we weren't proposing a time change, I don't know what the hours are, but certainly if that's something we would like to see, we could discuss with the operator. Thank you.
Well, I think we should probably continue to the next meeting, just to get some answers and.
Did we have any comments from emergency from the fire department for access and any, did we, did we get any letter, comment letters back from anybody?
No, so the building was sprinkler, it's going to be sprinkler.
Yeah.
We just, I discussed this with Steve in the past, and he had said, building sprinkler, it's a typical corporate building, corporate compound, so he had no issues.
There's enough of big parking lot for this, they have to, they're not gonna, they're not gonna drive in that parking lot to fight the fire in.
They're gonna do it from the street.
They're gonna do it from the street and from the back parking lot, so.
So I was gonna say, we'll go the operation, it would be from the street or the back parking lot, the only thing that would be accessing probably the parking lot would be probably ambulance, and I think with the way it sits right now, ambulance would fit through there, like a commercial vehicle.
We don't have a D E P number yet, right?
Yeah, no, it has a six fifteen.
So we'll be continuing as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Well.
So. Do you want conservation to make their?
You, you can do yours first and then.
Yeah, no, I agree, yeah, so conservation, you guys wanna make motion to continue to?
August third?
August third?
Uh, we're gonna go second meeting.
Yeah, but they, they can finish theirs now.
All right.
Okay. Oh, sorry, I'm. I'll take the worship. So that will be continued to August third at, um, we're gonna make that at six forty-five in the McCann Room. Do you have, um, do you have the white ticket, the green cards or the white tickets for conservation?
I have copies of the conservation. I have the copies. But I can bring.
I don't need the original, it's just the copies are fine. I don't know if you're able to give them or we can make copies here.
You can scan them and just email them.
Yeah, oh, we can do that, yeah, and you can just scan and send them, so we have them for the file.
I do have the ones for planning, for you guys, for the planning.
Okay. Where that is.
Just to manage expectations in terms of open items, it's D E P bound number for the Conservation Commission Planning Board, I presume you wanna see some detail about plantings around the transformer.
Right, and if we can come up with something to break up the railing wall there.
Yeah. Some consternation of the front facade of the, of the building, some concept on that. Um, the landscaping around the transformer and also confirmation of the hours of operation.
Okay.
From the owner, for the operator.
If you're looking for any kind of an example, and you're traveling on Route one sixty-nine. There is a small building, I don't know how far. If you're leaving here, it would be on the right, now it was a utilitarian building, which was totally surrounded with a sea of asphalt, and it was a building very similar, but smaller than the McDonald's now. They rebuilt it for a cannabis retail site, and we asked them to dress it up, and while they did a great job. And that's just an example of what you could do, what's the one downtown?
Green Bath?
No, no, I mean the um the, the one with the fake windows, just so if they wanted to see.
Come on.
Cumberland Farms, when you drive into the.
But don't look at their landscape.
No, they have, they are not a good example of maintaining, but if you're driving in the downtown, it's really part of the downtown. And they put in, well, they're bigger windows, because it's a larger brick building, but it looks like windows, so it just looks to give belongs. And it's amazing what you can do, they don't have to be big either, they don't have to be, but it's just a suggestion and.
Something to break up that big spans of clipboard, I think.
Well, the clipboard does look, look like big Y, do you know what I mean, like it.
It does, but if you had, if you had maybe something, maybe.
Match that.
Some, some, it's a, that's gonna be a high span.
Space.
That's a clipboard, it may be something to break up the, the height wise, uh, something across the middle, I don't know.
Even, even uh.
I don't wanna say a ribbon, but a uh or e- e- even, even to put a small awning above, uh, awning or a roof above the doors, above the two doorways, add a small roof, that, that's gonna add a lot.
They have an office, so the awning that goes over the window, the current window, the proposed window, then the entrance, if they continue that as just a line going across as a, you know.
That would break it up, but I think the two back doors too, I mean, if you, you've got room right there over the sidewalk.
There, there are architects who would do a better job than.
Come up with something on that, but I think that will add a lot, if you just give it a little bit of uh, something above the doors in that area, a line above that window, some, something in that area. Okay, so I'm gonna make a
Motion?
Motion to continue this special permit hearing till August ninth at, give Eric, we've gotta give it, gotta give time on it, so the other one's gonna need at least a half hour, I think. Seven fifteen.
And conservation, do you wanna close, are we good for the night or?
Maybe we'll close during the time.
No, no, closing, closing the meeting.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, just closing the meeting, yep, Maureen second?
And we're, yeah, and we're continuing this on the third, August third, okay, yes.
My motion is to continue to August ninth at seven fifteen, you need a second for that?
Yeah, need a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, Sandy's second, discussion, hearing none, all is in favor? unanimous? Hey, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure working with you. It's been a pleasure working with you, man.
You know, it's, I just noticed this coincidence, that you were the same last name.
I know, huh, yeah.
Coincidence.
I wanted to say, if we really have the ugliness in Donald, should we get a reward? Right, exactly.
Should get more, more brick or something, you know?
Enjoy your summer here.
You could ask him about his blog.
Say it. I'm gonna tell him I voted for him, even though.
Yep.
He must be so happy at the end of the school year.
Oh, yeah, yeah, she's, she had a tough year this year.
She did.
How do you?
No, I forgot. Yeah, yeah, we were thinking, probably will. This is the time, this is the time when we all do it at the same.
Okay.
I'll tell you one.
Yeah, I would love to do something.
The engineering company, the group that put this set of plants together for the fire station, did a phenomenal job.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'll tell you, there, there's, I went through, through these online, and I was looking for the stormwater, the details and stuff like that, there was a lot of thought put in, put into the, the, just the detail of the plant.
Look at this, look at the foolishness here. Look at the foolishness here.
Oh, yeah, that's underwater, that's underwater potential, you know what I'm saying, all this.
Yeah. You gotta, you gotta know, it's a contour screen, that whole, it's, it's a utility plant, it has all the utility.
So.
But you can't read it this scale.
No, it's a big scale, it's a lot better.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to reopen the site plan hearing for the fire, site plan review for the.
Do I have a second?
Yes, sir, I will.
All right, all those in favor, we'll reopen.
I'll pick up here, I guess, um, run quickly through some of the aesthetics appearance of the proposed building. Uh, here's the front elevation from Worcester Street. Um, there's the apparatus bay with all the, the overhead doors, again, on both sides of the apparatus bay too. Um, it could be drive through or go both directions under Worcester or out the back, um, towards dark or toward Snow Street. Um, so the apparatus bay is our large garage area over here, there's a training tower associated with the garage at the corner of Worcester and Snow, um, that's somewhat, besides the, the training function of that tower, it's also a nod to the, um, to the original fire station building and some of the architecture, some of the historic architecture around Southbridge as well, so, um, but a more modern
You mean the training tower?
The training tower, you know, that vertical element, but it is, it has a functional use for their training purposes, there are windows that are operational, um, there for them to do training and put up ladders over here, um, so they will use that really for training purposes. Um, and then on this side of, of our building, there would be the administration type offices, so there's offices in the front, um, a lobby space and somewhat of a gallery, and they have, um, some of their historic, uh, there's, there's framed items that they have, that they currently have on display at the, at the fire station, other things that are stored, but, um, different artifacts would be in the lobby and gallery area, um.
Gonna bring the horse drawn, uh, the horse drawn carriage?
Yes.
I, I see it on the plan, I see it on the plan, it's actually drawn right here in the plan.
Awesome.
Right in the front lobby, but it's drawn right on there.
Yeah, so that would be right inside of that, that main entrance, it's off of Worcester Street.
That's great.
Um, in the, there's that plaza that was mentioned briefly before, um, there's a, a little plaza off of the visitor parking area, and as you approach the main entrance, if you're, if you're parking, um, there's that as well. And the, all of our, all faces of this building are primarily brick, we, uh, we looked at a brick that would actually be very similar to the original, uh, the existing fire station now.
There we go.
Um, so, um, it's mainly brick, but there's also a couple of different metal panels, um, metal panels between windows and metal panels, it's a lighter color, um, that's higher up on the elevations and above the apparatus bay doors, brick and metal panels at the tower.
Now, that's a different color brick, isn't it, or is that the same color and I'm just not?
It's supposed to be the same.
Same time. It's a shadowing.
It's just the way the light's hitting it.
There's the brick right there.
I saw that.
That's gonna be on the tower too?
Yes. I don't know if it looks.
It looks like it's white, you know?
Yeah, it's the sun, okay, the sun, sunlight, all right, okay.
So, um, I apologize for that, it is one, that was brick throughout, so.
Okay. I like that.
Um, but two different metal panel colors, which are more distinct to me, she hears, what we're, um, planning on in that is the brick selection. Um, and then at the, um, so this is from the south side, from the visitor parking area, uh, that's the somewhat shorter, um, part of the building, which has bunk rooms, um, some of their living spaces are more towards the back of the building. We have bunk rooms and there's an, um, an exercise space, their kitchen in their, like, living area, that's generally in the back of the plan, um, versus the administrative and offices are up front, and then the apparatus bay, um, on the other side.
One, one thing to note on this, this view, is that the sidewalk will carry across, uh, you know, the apron will go across, so you'll have a concrete apron, and it'll continue the sidewalk across the, the front of the building. There's the stairway up to the main entrance, as Jennifer mentioned, on the, the left-hand side, uh, there's a low seat wall, as you come up into the plaza, it, you know, lends itself to sitting on the other side, uh, some memorial items as well, flagpole, and then a ramp that goes up to the main entrance.
Lighting on the front of the building?
There will be lighting, which is not shown here, there's lighting, um, you wanna, we gonna do that later?
Okay, that's fine, all right.
There will be, uh, bothered lighting, um, along the walkway that leads up, uh, from the right-hand side to the main entrance, uh, so accent collars, as well as home mounted fixtures throughout the site, which are fifteen feet high, Chris will talk about it.
And we will have some building matted, um, fixtures as well, um, your apparatus bay doors at the main entrance and some other doors, like, um, there will be, um, lighting mounted above the, um, that trading tower door, it's hard to see that that's a door, but that's a door in the face of that upstairs tower. And then there's a couple other views that I have. This is the backside of the apparatus bay, um, and backside of the building, some of their living areas again are, are toward the back, um, and the apparatus bay roof, um, it does slope, it's about a half inch, um, per foot, sloping down, um, from the Worcester Street side, um, toward the back. Um, another view of the back, same materials, and a view from Snow Street, and you can see some of the grade and that retaining wall with the four-foot fence, um, above it there, and then the training tower with, um, the training pad area for laydown of, um, the ladders and setting them up. I guess.
There'll be, uh, street tree trees along, uh, Snow Street, as well as, uh, there's, there's EV parking in the back of it.
There's a lot of EV parking on this site.
Yeah, in general, you speak to that, but it's.
You guys, you guys gonna give out your firemen, uh, electric vehicles or something?
There's a certain percentage that we were required to, um, to plan for.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Certain percentage of the parking space.
I've seen other places where there's a lot of them too.
Sturgis Plaza.
Now, what about the, um, the additional building?
Oh, I don't have a rendering, I apologize, so, um, I do have, we do have an elevation, but it is black and white, and, um, so that building is a, um, a metal building, or a pre-fabricated metal building situation, there's, there's not any masonry or anything, it is, um, it would have metal siding. Um, that's here in black and white, I apologize, it might be difficult for you to see, um, that is metal siding, um, a, a slight, slight slope again, um, generally matching the slope of the apparatus bay. Um, and it is, um, higher at I call the front of it, the side more so facing Worcester, and the lower side of that roof, and it's, it's really not that much of a pitch, but the lower side is the park side, um, where we have, um, the six doors on the park side, and because of the nature of the layout of parking and everything, only two of the doors actually, um, connect to the visitor parking lot area, um, but it is all metal siding, metal roof, that's a pre-fab metal building.
So.
Go ahead.
Subject to budget?
Subject to budget, yes.
One, one thing that this building will have, uh, is proposed right now is a restroom facility for use from the park, you know, um, connection, there's a sidewalk, Joe maybe can point it out, there's a sidewalk, um, as well as a crosswalk over to the, the building to access the restrooms.
So from the parking lot, there would be a crosswalk, um, in this project connecting to, if this is built, if there's the money, if it's favorable, um, and that was the the crosswalk, the sidewalk, and the bathrooms that would be available, um, there's two single user restrooms that are planned in this building right at the corner there, so you could cross from the park and use those facilities, you wouldn't be going into the rest of the auxiliary building, it would just be two doors, um, directly from outside into the single users.
Would the, uh, necessary utilities, power and water and all that be located there in case this building? Would come in the future or?
Yes. Everything, we are providing sewer to the, around the, near the perimeter of the building, so that when, when it does get constructed, you know, if it does get constructed at a later time, those utilities.
So you're gonna stub it all up?
So it's all stuck towards that, that area, so we're not digging.
Yeah, that's where I'm getting that, yeah.
But not below that building, because of the foundations, the footings, the design that would have to happen.
The, the only, the only issue I see with that building is, I think it's great, if you got stuff parked up at DPW, you got, it should all be in the same, one place, is that off of that pedestrian parking lot, you've done a great, I think, a great job on the, uh, main building itself, but, uh, from the main parking lot, you're gonna look at two large garage But from the main parking lot, you're gonna look at two large garage doors and couldn't just plain steel on there. Is there anything on that one face because, that you could do to soften it up or do something to make it? You got that large expanse wall, exactly what we were just with McDonald's about. You've got that large wall that has nothing on it. I mean, you've, with the building here, you broke it up between the steel and the brick and stuff like that. I don't expect brick or anything out there. But is there some other type of, maybe something with sort of the brick color with, that you could break up a line of that wall or something?
Are you talking about the building?
The building, yeah, yeah. Cause look, look at it, it's right here. If you put that drawing down a second. See Sandy, that's, that's the building you're gonna be seeing right there.
Yeah, no, I know. Actually, remember though, the decor, I like the fence, I like the fence that you're putting in. That fence is gonna be, I think.
Not, not across there.
Not across there?
The car, they're, they're gonna be entering, the vehicles. There is gonna be a tree right in front here, a bigger tree.
All this is just outlining, this is not, where is the peripheral fence? Oh, this is the peripheral fence right here. Is that one?
Yes.
Okay.
And then there is, they showed a fence up along the back too. But they said it was, what I saw on the plan is it's either black chain link or ornamental depending on budget.
Yep.
Yeah.
On the back section over there towards, towards the neighbor right there on that side and down towards the neighbors right there. That, that's what I saw on the plans. But you know, you've got, you've got that section there and I, I think you're looking up and you're, from the street view, you're gonna have that, but then you've got the steel building in the back. I'm just saying that we're doing so much to make this building look really nice. If there was just something, some, and I don't want it to be an expensive type. What color is this gonna be now, if it would be, would be a light color?
Probably a light, we'd wanna coordinate it with the metal wall panels that are on the, this building. It's, it's not gonna, going to be the same miniature likely.
Right.
And we're not giving custom colors because of cost. But for the metal panels on the main building, we are looking at, it's a lighter gray color, depending on how the sun is hitting it in the rendering, you know, it might be looking light. So that's a lighter gray color and then a darker gray color between the windows, other elevations. It's looking a little brown there, but it's like a darker, it's a warm gray, but it's a darker gray color. So probably would have the auxiliary building be close to the lighter gray color.
Yep. Mm-hmm. That would be.
That's what we were planning for so far.
And I'm just thinking that you got that long wall span, so I know you got a tree up and, you got one tree in front on where that big wall opening was, right there, you can see on the island. Yeah. Right there. You're not gonna really, I mean, I'm talking to people coming into the, they're, they're driving into the parking lot. You got, you got this great fire station, now they're, they're coming in, you see the steel industrial garage in the back. I just think that at least that facade, when you're coming into that area, should be just something to enhance, enhance it a little bit.
Okay. I know you have unbelievable budget constraints. And I think the committee and you all have done a really good job of working within that budget. So we don't wanna.
No, exactly, you don't wanna burden, but I think if there's something, something with color, something with, something like that, that just to, to do something on, on that, on that one wall. And I know you wanted to, least amount of.
Maintenance issues.
Well, also openings too. You wanted to secure, you wanted to secure building and stuff like that. But that is facing into the site and so forth. I think that the backside and everything else, I don't have a problem with it cause it'll look like a garage off of the ball field, that, that'll look good from the back. But I mean, this side here, I think it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a standout on that part of it.
I'm, I'm thinking that's the horn that's now in the tower's history.
So that thing's still gonna go off, six o'clock? Come on, you gotta set it down.
When I first moved here. Water buffalo, I'm like, what is that?
Yeah, six o'clock horn, you can't get, wait, can't get rid of it. We all rely on it.
Unfortunately, it's been the tanks, all that stuff, that, that system is long gone.
Yeah, I'd love to work it across the street and walking out and getting blasted with it. Alright.
Yeah. That would be, I mean, a possibility too, certain, depending on plantings there in front of that face.
Like a middle thing?
Maybe.
Well, you know.
Yeah, no other, you're, you're the expert on that. And I think just look at that, one more tree. I don't think trees will be.
We don't wanna push the budget any further than you already.
I have a few questions. I was, I was just gonna ask the same thing to the tower. You know, if we have a disaster, hopefully not, what will do for, notify our residents? Like now we have the, the.
The first 911 is overutilized for everything.
So you're gonna, it, it's kinda like a history, because of the town people used to live in, kinda like, we can't relive it now?
Well, every aspect of this facility has been cut in size and in specification to meet our budget needs. So it's something that we can't afford to recreate.
Any future, in the future, if you got added, is any possible there or not? Add it like a tower or something?
It's a, it's a huge, the, the tower, this is what the design is. I mean, we were trying to meet something, an aspect of it of continuing a tower. We're gonna use it for training purposes. We can't have the same type of architecture that we have now because we can't afford it and.
We understand.
Another, another question, what Mike was saying in the back, if you do the same thing to South Beach Fire Department, wherever at the park, if you realize that's a, that's the fire department, it's not just a garage that the way it is now. I mean, you see the front, you're looking at South Beach Fire Department, you could put that in the back too where the.
Oh, just the name on the back of the garage?
And one more thing, I, I see, I faced that on my buildings, few buildings, the overhead, over door, the doors and, you know, that, small doors and the bigger doors, why we don't expand the overhead? When the snow, whatever, doesn't be like exactly where, behind the door, the freezer and all that. That's something, I don't know, I faced it on my own building sometimes. And those other doors, like overhead, people standing there waiting for the rain or something. That doesn't be like flat, cut down flat.
There is a little bit of an overhang at the doors, at the, at the apparatus bay doors.
Yeah, I can see that.
Yes. Sorry?
It's more the main doors.
And an overhead.
Oh, you got the bigger.
There's a, there's a canopy over, over the entrance way too. And then in, in the back, there is a door, but it's not really for entrance purposes. It's more for the employees coming in and out. That is recessed, there's a door back there, it's recessed, so it has some protection.
See, here's a.
If you're entering the door.
Canopies here.
But we do have some canopies.
And it covers this whole area, that main entry door.
To answer the council's question, also the, in front of the apparatus bay right now, it's heated. So anything that would drop there would melt.
Yeah.
No, and actually that corner of that upper canopy covers that whole, full main entry area, looking at the plan here. Alright, well, let's go through with more of the site plan and. I think architectural, that, that's the only thing I saw was the one facade. And I mean, it doesn't, I don't want it to be anything that costs. But you know what I mean?
Now, you mentioned the sidewalk, it gotta go through, through across where the truck will be traveling.
Yep.
It's gonna be strong enough for the weight, the water and all that in the truck?
They actually had reinforced pads on the plans, yep.
There are different sidewalk specifications that we use. Like there's sidewalks in the back that are purely pedestrian.
They're gonna be H20 loaded on the front sidewalks.
Versus that front.
The parking, you have electric chargers on it. It's gonna be used only for electric car or, or we're gonna make Ws for regular car and electric charger? I mean, after we work on the, on the park, we lost a lot of parking there. And I'm sure they're gonna be using the private park in the future.
They're not gonna have access to it.
No?
No. And the thing is, is the only ones that are gonna park there, when you guys get a, a second or third alarm, your guys are gonna park in them spaces, I could tell you right now. Because there's, there's not enough parking in there when you call in your second and third alarms. Hopefully you don't need to, but, and I mean, for the most time, it's gonna be, it's part of the new code. Look at the Sturridge Plaza, look at everyone else, the new code is requiring so many, every, every new building is requiring so many electric vehicles.
So the electric vehicle we have in the parking, because half our fire department don't have electric. We're gonna have enough parking for you guys?
Yes. Alright, you wanna go on with the rest of the site plan?
Yeah, we can talk utilities now.
See, it's easier to read on this.
Site utility plan, obviously we're providing all new utilities to the, to the building. First discuss electrical, there'll be a new pad-mounted transformer located in the back of the building. The intent is to bring a new primary service below grade from the utility pole on snow. Underground service with a transformer and then the primary, secondary service into the building. The building will have a pad-mounted generator, which is planned to be diesel. That again is on the west side of the building, rear of the building. That'll back up, provide backup for the building. We do have a natural gas service to the building for gas boiler and water here. New gas service will come in from snow. The meters plan to be, again, on the backside of the building out of the site of Worcester Street. The building will, obviously there's plumbing as well as a fire protection system inside the building. It'd be an automatic sprinkler system. So we're planning new services, new water and fire services from Worcester Street into the, into the north side of the building. We are planning to connect to the existing 16-inch main under mechanical. There'll be a new 12-inch main that we'll install because there's currently only a 6-inch line in Worcester Street. I believe there's some plans on upgrading that water main in the future. That's why we're planning for a new 12-inch section here, so that can be extended in the future. And then we'll have our new domestic and fire water services and we're planning to have a new phi hydrant onsite, right in that location. Sanitary sewer, because of the garage aspect of the buildings, actually of both buildings, there'll be oil-water separated, there'll be a series of floor drains within the garage. Those will be directed to an oil-water separated, which then would connect to the new sanitary service for the building. So we actually have two services for this building. There's one sanitary service, again, coming out and connecting to Worcester Street. And then again, on the south side, there'll be a sanitary service, as Jennifer was talking about. This is more of the admin area, so that's picking up all the bathrooms and, and, and those plumbing fixtures. We are extending, like we briefly discussed, the sewer up in the Westley direction in order to plan for the future or plan for the outbuilding. If it is based there, obviously there'll be an oil-water separator for that garage area as well as the toilet would connect to the sewer. And that is getting directed towards Worcester Street to connect to the sanitary main. Drainage, as Brandon mentioned, is, the site predominantly grades towards Worcester Street from the west side of the site to the east. There is a small portion of the site that also drains to the west. There's very minimal storm drainage in the onsite, I'm willing to say it's onsite. There's one catch basin, existing catch basin in this location right near Worcester Street. All of this drainage, if it doesn't get to that catch basin, it's just running out onto Worcester Street. There is another catch basin in the back here on Martin where some of that, where this existing paved area would drain to. So the plan for drainage, we, we are redirecting the whole, our, our site towards Worcester Street. There's a series of deep sump catch basins that will be provided within the paved areas. All those deep sump catch basins would be run through water quality structures, which help remove suspended solids. So the plan is to meet, you know, obviously local requirements as well as the DEP stormwater breaks. So after all of the storm drainage is collected through the catch basins, run through the water quality structures, we've designed two subsurface infiltration beds. It's a series of, of structures, plastic structures, which are loaded, capable of H20 loading. You know, we're obviously aware of the heavy traffic that's gonna be in these areas. Open bottom in order to infiltrate as much of the rainwater as we can possibly infiltrate, but obviously also have overflows to allow the drainage to overflow and connect to the existing stormwater drainage system in the municipal right of ways in Worcester and Mechanic Street. We included a drainage report as part of our submission. So the intent is not to exceed any type of runoff rate from the existing condition. We've been able to reduce the amount of runoff rate from the site, from the existing condition. Site lighting.
Just a second. So that's gonna be a diesel generator and not a, a natural gas generator?
That's right.
Is there a trade-off in price of that or?
But when we get, I forget the size of this generator.
You would need a gas, you would need a gas, you'd need a gas line.
Yeah, so there's a certain point where the diesel becomes more cost-effective than the natural gas. And we're at this point, that's, that's.
What about.
Stored in tanks? And there's, there's another reason too for the, the diesel is, a recommendation of critical operations is really to use diesel, not to go with natural gas.
Yep.
So natural gas is considered an, is an interruptible source.
So that generator will have, it's a belly tank, there's a tank, and it also has a tank within the tank. So it's a double wall tank, there's controls, interstitial monitors. So should there be an issue with the primary tank, there's a secondary tank to not allow any kind of spill. And then through the building management system, you'll be notified that there's an issue.
What about noise?
We are aware of noise, there would be a enclosure, there's an enclosure around the generator. I don't know the exact DB, but we could get you that information.
That was, that was actually, the cut sheets I believe were included in the, in the submission.
One, one thing with that proposed, with the proposed garage back there will help tremendously because that wall of that garage will act as a buffer to the noise. And all the, all the noise is gonna be pushed towards the ball fields and up towards Carpenter Pond. Is that like a weekly test on the generator?
Yeah.
Thing is, if you need it.
Yeah. And in that area, the ambient noise in that area during a weekday? That generator takes on, you're, you're gonna maybe hear it, but it's not gonna be overly noticeable. The ambient noise in that, in that area is quite.
A similar one would be green metals if you want.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, is that the same size roughly?
Yeah.
And does that one, I know there was concern about that one. Has that interrupted the people's lives across the river, like some people? I know that was an issue, right?
You, you, you can, you can hear it.
Is it okay?
You can hear it.
But this one here, this one here, where it is right now, I mean, I could, if that building was there, that's gonna, everything, there's no resonance.
I mean, with the music that's going on and all this, I don't think the generator will matter.
No, and you know, the thing is, if that generator is needed, it's, it's gonna be a big.
Anyplace that's where it's needed.
It's gonna be a big event and everybody's gonna be considering the fact that the things are working, not whether it's noise.
Yeah. How many hours of operation?
Twenty-four.
No, no, I'm saying.
We hope so.
Seventy-two hours.
And one of the reasons that we have to maintain the whole facility is that the training room is also gonna be the emergency operations center for the community. So every aspect of that building has to be.
Covered.
Covered 24 hours a day, including toilets and the food.
They run low, they can always suck up.
They run low, they can always suck off their gas tank, or the diesel tanks on their trucks, that's all, in the back garage.
I wanna ask a question, nothing to do with that, the Snow Street. Are you guys gonna make it more wider now, or it's gonna be the same?
Same.
Same. So you guys consider that there's a vehicle, the trucks coming up, and it's enough spaces to be a fire truck going in? You know, take the smoke, be the fire truck and the ambulance and the and the park in the back. You know, people travel, not gonna delay any call, nine-one-one, or?
No, the the layout of the apparatus is designed so that the majority of our responses will be from the front of the building. It'll only be the third call or something that would be coming out of the backside.
Correct, but sometimes you, on an ambulance call, you gotta go back to the station, put the ambulance, wrap the fire truck, and you have a backup on that for games or something, or a part of that, something you guys.
There's plenty of space in the front of the building where if we needed to ditch a vehicle, it could go right in front of the station.
How much the building gone next to the Snow Street? How far? I know it's a little, it's a lot of grass and the and the.
I think it was thirty feet was the edge of the building until the Snow Street.
We can park in there, on the side of that, take some of the grass off or put additional parking there?
No, because we were using it.
Yeah, see, I'd I'd rather not, because that parking's gonna end up being used for ball fields and everything else along there. And it's gonna more more, it's gonna, people in and out parking along there, backing out onto Snow Street's gonna be worse than keeping that just plain Snow Street right there.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of gray changes that starts to happen when you get to this point, where it's already, you know, like at least a few feet change here. And it just gets more as you get down. So they kind of pull off parking, requiring that wall to be much taller to.
Just just a question, you know?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The the operate, say an ambulance leaves, does he come back through the front, or does he go all the way around and?
So the ambulance bay is the bay closest to the administration area, and that's the only bay that will be drive-through.
Okay.
Because they typically flow, those two trucks would go out. And today, we had three ambulances on the road at the same time, like three times today. So that one would come back, depending on which position it was in and whether the other truck is out. If it's only the first truck doing calls, then they would just back in.
Okay, all right.
Makes sense.
Site lighting, we included the lighting calculation in the in the package that we had submitted. There'll be poles in the parking area, that's these larger circles, so they're fifteen-foot poles, all dark sky compliant, being down, all LED. So this is the planned fixture for the site light poles, so there'd be three along the south side. There's one in the apron in front, and then sight lights in the in the rear west parking lot, back parking lot.
Are you gonna put any wall packs on the on that outbuilding facing the Martin Street?
Yes. Yeah, so that's actually, yes, I'm sorry. This is also part of the.
Yeah.
So there would be, yes, there would be lighting on the outbuilding.
And by the doors, yeah.
SL5s, that's what these these, this is what's planned to be on the building. And Brandon mentioned, there's some bollards that are long walkways out in the front here, labeled as SL6, 7, 8. So there's some bollards out in the front, that's these. And then, as Jennifer said, there's a few canopies in the building, and they'll have these recessed fixtures in the canopies. So there'll be mounted on the building, lighting in the back over the apparatus bay doors, as well as in the front over the doors. And then obviously, emergency lighting at the at all the doorways. That's everything kind of utilities.
Okay.
Anything else?
You, can someone address the traffic and access and so forth?
So the on this plan, you can see that the apparatus vehicle tracking and path is shown here. And see, you know, movements throughout the site, so that's been studied. There was a traffic study done, and it man associates. There's no negative impact from this facility on the adjacent roads. There's nothing that's mandatory, you know, no mandatory improvements. They did suggest some kind of perimeter improvements, really signage, related to really just the surrounding area. So that that really just has to do with some some.
Yeah, I I read through the whole traffic study and so forth, and it doesn't meet the warrant for vehicle trips and so forth for a cross crossroad stop stop signal. It doesn't meet the warrant on that. And I didn't think it would. The only thing I have a little concern on, and it's an idea, it's something that's to throw out there. The approach coming from down Worcester Street and then going up Worcester Street. I think there should be, I don't know if there's a way doing this, but you know how we have the crosswalk signals now on Main Street? If there was one on each direction, so in other words, if you guys got a call that coming out, that all it would do is, it wouldn't stop traffic, it would just blink blink and alert, and it would just say, emergency vehicle's entering, and it and it, it would be like an alert type of thing. I don't know what the protocol is on that, that put maybe two, three hundred, four hundred feet in each direction of of the driveway. I think it would, it's a very congested area in there, and I think especially, I mean, sometimes the speeds coming down through there are pretty, especially at night, are pretty pretty quick going through there. Because I've I've actually been down there, and I've I've had guys pass me up in front of the cannabis place going sixty miles an hour, because I was going the speed limit. So I, you know, if someone's coming up that fast and you've got a vehicle pulling out, even though you guys got the fire departments got their lights on and so forth, I mean, I just think that maybe it would just be a early warning type type signage that might be considered. I mean, I would just consider it on on my end. I mean, I I'm not sure what the logistics are to do it and and everything, or anything like that.
The cross, the crosswalks work good, and they're, the orange, you you notice something going on.
There, I I've noticed a lot less people running running crosswalks on Main Street with with the lights. Because I used to see at least a couple of months, people waiting there, and then people driving right through. But lately, it's like the lights are on, and I don't see anybody going through with the lights on on the crosswalks. But it's just a, it's just a thought, because I did read the traffic, and it did say some early warning signs and so forth, I think, in the traffic study. It's it's a thought to maybe consider, and that's something that I'd like to see personally, but it's it's up to the board. And I and I, again, it's a it's a costly thing too. I mean, it's, if there was some way of doing it, but but otherwise, changing the crosswalk location, that the improvement you're doing, that's a, that was recommended and shown in the traffic study. And I that I think is a great improvement to that area also. So, I mean, that's, for the most part, I mean, access and, one thing, you you have the you have like your power truck, the long tower, or your ladder coming in across the back back driveway. That's gonna be a gated driveway with like remote remote access, so they don't want to get out and type of thing. Okay, and they're gonna have to go all the way down to the playground, and the the big trucks that swing back around to come in the back back entrance? Up now, up snow and then up through the playground area? Yeah.
There there is, they they calculated the swing that it can come in.
It can, it's tight, it's tight, it's, I looked at it, because I I've done a lot with your turnarides, and I looked in there, and that's, you gotta hit that thing dead on in order to make it. And I think it's, most of the time, you're gonna come and cross that back, because it's makes more sense to come in the back gate and come straight into the building.
You know, what Mike's talking about, I don't know if it's possible, it's like, you'd have to look, but it's almost like he likes to suspend something across the road, the the sign in the middle. So as you're driving down, you'd see that.
Now, see, I don't think that'll meet the, that won't meet the warrant across the road, and I tell you, getting that approved is gonna be, gonna be tough.
I mean, but it's the kind of warning you want, there's something happening.
But I think you'll you'll still, you'll still have it on both sides, heading up both directions.
Yeah.
I think by the time you put a pole and drop a light across the opening, and I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be really expensive. That that, once you start dropping across the road, the road like that, it's it comes, it's cost prohibitive. But, I mean, doing the doing the side ones, I mean, they're really, I mean, United Lens sort of did 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 a didn't wanna put their own in, okay? So, I mean, there's a way doing it. My biggest thing is how, what would activate it if there is RF signal that they, oh wait, you guys probably can use your ambulance, your signal to up up, turn them lights on, correct? Most likely, that's a possibility, because where you can turn the lights green and so forth, and then your 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 little master signal there, that that you probably can just, if you activate that coming out there, which says, just flash them for a period of what, a time to time, three minutes or something like that while you're out or something, and be, and then they just shut off after that.
Certainly take a look at it. They they make them with the solar powered.
Yeah.
Radio controlled.
Yeah.
So you don't have to drop power.
It would, it would be something to look at. I think it, I think it would go a long way.
Just as a warning.
Yeah. As as just an alert that, hey, there's vehicles gonna be pulling pulling in and in and out of here.
Or it can be right in front of the sign, one big pole and a sign, digital, say they had a vehicle coming out.
Yeah, this emergency, emergency vehicles entering with a with a flash. Could be a single flash, I mean, it could be.
Does Dudley do anything different? Because they're, they have the same kind of.
Dudley runs.
No.
No. They used to, they used to run a pole across the road with a red light on it. Dudley used to. But since they redid it, they didn't, they didn't, they took it and didn't, didn't put it back. But again, there's.
Same kind of.
But you gotta, it's not as densely populated.
No, there aren't houses all around it, so.
Yeah.
You got a good sideline.
There's, there's no streets, there's, you got, you got Mason Road, but then there's no streets up for at least three, two, three hundred, four hundred feet away. This one here, you got snow, you got a crowd, you got the different cross areas.
Cars in the park.
Yeah, and parks, cars on the side of the road parked and so forth, so, yeah, it's it's just something I thought, I thought I'd like to see. But, I mean, that's pretty much, I went I went through these plans with a fine-tooth comb, okay? And you guys covered everything that I would even expected for stormwater, for access. I mean, I I gotta say, they were the only two things that I really found that that would I would I would even question. So I think it was a great, great job, lot of thought, a lot of back and forth, and I know there was a lot of back and forth with the committee and the the fire department and everyone else on those these plans.
Thompson locations inside the site, just so you guys know, if you're gonna ask, it's right in the middle, inside, right there.
It's kind of shielded behind a wall too, it's got a decolleture, chest decolleture.
Trees too.
And trees throughout.
I really like that extra building for that, the back row for the park, it's a great idea.
Well, the other thing too, that actual building, I mean, if there's, if you guys do like a, or if the town does like a cops and kids with the fire department and kids, you could pull the, use them bays or something along the park for for a type of thing too, I'm sure, because it is opening to the ball fields in that area.
Did you check with the PEGD, if any, were that the cause of the issue with the park? That's the discussion, and we we have some open discussion with Congressman Neal about the extra funds to meet the shortfall. And then we've been told by Senator Markey that that we can reapply for something along the line of that.
Time to construct, year, year and a half, or?
Sixteen months, I think.
Starting, starting mobilizing tomorrow for demolition. Don't blink.
Not yet, not yet. We we can't look for donations, because we're the committee, and they have not identified a committee chairperson.
On Town Street doing now, you donate, you put a brick for the company, or you donate money for a brick to anyone?
Then things we've discussed, and then we've had a family member from the community pass away, and they've generously, in lieu of flowers, have donated, gotten close to eight thousand dollars from that side. But yes, the the intent is that hopefully there are some other funding, local funding sources out there, but the members of the committee cannot.
Just for the record, too, environmental cleanup on the site, is it complete, doing what's required? Is there a lot that has to be done?
It's hazardous material, asbestos primarily, and we'll be getting mobilization tomorrow with containment. Everything will be done under the jurisdiction of the DEP. All notifications have been made. An onsite monitor, Ty and Bond, will be representing the town to oversee all of the removal activities. After the building has been abated, we'll begin the demolition. So we're mobilizing tomorrow, we'll be starting with containment. We're expecting our perimeter fencing to be installed on Monday, and it will be in full swing.
Can we just ask, how how are how are biddings going right now in the atmosphere? The, are biddings high or?
We, yeah.
They should be coming down. They should be coming down.
We'd like to see them come down, but it depends upon the area that we're building too. So it's almost like a crystal ball right now, where the estimates are being done very conservatively. Each round of design, we perform two competitive estimates, two different firms, trying to keep an eye on where we're at. But it, we, all we can do is be conservative and carry the appropriate contingencies right now. It really is the best numbers that bid number, and frankly, they're all over the place. We received bids in Stoke about three months ago, and they were about seven percent below estimate, we're very happy with that.
Yeah, because from a, from a year ago, the numbers have come down. Okay. You see the lines getting kind of good.
Yeah, I.
They're doing, they're doing a great job.
I think that some of the trees.
Yeah. It's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna dance.
I wonder who, who was the one that chose the landscaping trees? You? My favorite tree is where they go.
No, it's just a site plan review.
So largely approve it, we just don't need to close it.
True.
No, I just wanna see the.
The warning.
Yeah.
Warning lighting, I think the only two issues I see is the warning lighting in the facade, facade facing the parking lot on the back building. I mean, they're only two issues I see on my my end. I don't know the rest of the board.
I go along with what you say there on that one. I don't see anything that's, you know.
No, everything is thorough.
Very well done.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was a nightmare doing that drainage report. Wow. That has to be the most comprehensive drainage report, the drainage for your pre and post runoffs. It was like, there's stuff even to follow. So.
Yep, so I say that we're all set here, and we'll go for a vote.
Do you need a motion to approve the site plan?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for the new fire station.
Do I have a second?
Do we wanna do the conditions or?
Well, after it's.
Well, after you.
After we have discussion.
Yeah. Yeah. You have a second, motion in a second, so, conditions?
I'll start and then we can move down.
Sure.
We'll actually discuss you, actually.
Yeah.
I I just wanna say that it's a modern looking building, which is, you know, not to everybody's taste. I think it's pretty obvious that the committee worked very hard with you all professionals. To get the most out of the money you have available, the most important things are covered, which have to do with public safety. So things that I might have wanted, um you have to be pragmatic, and I'm not even gonna mention them because. You know, we have to be practical, you know, we have so much money. I certainly would have been okay with raising my tax dollars, I have a little more, something that was a little fancier, and if you do get low bidding. You might consider some decorative web lamps, but that's up to you, I support the project, it's so needed. And uh I think I'll leave it up to others for conditions.
Can I ask one question? I mean, this goes way back, and I'm not gonna run the wheel, but um. I did get questioned on this, uh and they wanted me to ask the, to ask the question. Your response time from here versus up to top of Denison Hill versus. Elm Street to top of Denison Hill, are you talking one minute, one, two minutes?
Under.
Under that? On that way?
In the forty-five second range.
Okay. Because that that was a question that came came up to me, well, it's like, is it, it's gonna, because people are saying, wow, it's gonna take five, eight minutes extra to get to get up to my house and stuff like that, so. Yeah, okay, alright, so on that one, on on my issue, again, I just want the the um, something to soften the back of the building. That back building and um. Some type of early warning. Light or signal uh in both directions on Worcester Street to uh notify that there's emergency vehicles. I'd like to see that. I think that the building looks very nice, I like the brick effect, I like the fact that it's not a flat roof, um we're not building something that's gonna be obsolete in. Ten, twenty years, I think we've done a very good job with. Using what available funds were to create something that's gonna be a long lasting needed addition. Considering the original design that you guys had for the building here. Hundred percent improvement, I saw the original, the original concepts and stuff like that, some of them were. I just said, I don't think it would even fit in uh some other towns that, I mean, it it wouldn't have fit at all, and I I think that the design, I think that that's why I look at it. You've done such a great design on the building, it's it's that one, that one facade facing that parking lot, that's that, why I think I'm strong about.
They're gonna have a hard time walking out this door with with what you're.
Well, no, what? Can I, can I, can I tell, can I tell you, in my thirty years of doing civil engineering?
He's not big with compliments.
There has not been a more complete set of plans that I that I that I've come across, and I I gotta compliment the. You guys and uh everyone on on the whole, the whole project, because it's, it put a good, it put a great project before us.
Very impressive, um for me, I'm just excited, not just about the fire station, but about the fencing that you've chosen. I mean, we we're, that was, that's something.
That's just perfect, yeah.
I would like to say though, um please do not put Joe Dow in charge of any landscaping. Because I did vote for him, he's not even listening to me. I did vote for him, my husband, my husband voted for him, but I am yet to see a potted plant that the Sandy and I asked for. But not that I'm complaining, just don't put him in charge.
I've never seen Joe turn red.
He's like, wait a minute, I'm on my phone, she's talking about me.
You got the two planters on Snow Street.
But it's alright, Joe, I voted for you, my husband did.
Okay. You're all set? Yeah, oh, yeah, I don't think we have to worry about the landscaping. So, me and it's, all those in favor? Congratulations. Containment. I never, I never, I never ran across you guys, I never did any readings, anything I've ever done. Yeah, I I've done some projects down in your area, usually sometimes you run across the names and while you're waiting and stuff like that, I don't think that's ever in my twenty years. Thank you. Great. I thought it's pretty cool you were able to implement your uh the training power.
But I said, wait a minute.
At first, when I looked at it, oh, why would you put it in front there? It makes more sense, it shows the community that you're you're there, you're working. And I, I saw a lot, and the way it got implemented in.
I'm just.
Especially today where. I think it's, I think it's great, you're about the only, not for many uh patients to have a training power, do that. Yeah, I know, we're losing Eric, when's your last day, Eric? He's taking over DPW. Oh, what are you doing? Deputy. Really? Oh, yes. No, I don't think so either. It being eight fifty, I think a motion closes the meeting?
I would even underfold, because I'm alone.